All right, so we're opening up the committee of the whole meeting at 8:03 PM. Let's move on to the adoption of the agenda. I move that the agenda be adopted as presented, seconded by councillor Juwania. Any additions? None? All those in favour carried then. Declarations of peculiar interests? None. Delegations and presentations. Policing in Clarence Rockland. Good day, gentlemen. Police... I said, "Do not fire in chief."
So, the purpose of tonight's presentation and discussion, and I've asked members of our OPP service to be here tonight to answer questions that council may have that I may not be able to answer for you, but was really to approach you as the Director of Protective Services and address some of the challenges that we face from a by-law enforcement perspective, and look at some options and sort of how the policing world works between the two. So, I've put together a short PowerPoint to just sort of give you an overview of policing and law enforcement in general in Canada with a Clarence Rockland perspective. And we can talk about some options and talk about some different ideas, and certainly both the Municipal Policing Bureau member from Marilia is here, as well as our detachment commander is here, so if there are questions of the OPP, they may be able to answer them tonight, they may have to get back to you on them, but certainly they're here to answer your questions and provide council with some clarification. So, law enforcement in our province is really addressed at a federal level by the RCMP, so they don't have a big presence, but they are here doing some federal enforcement. We have our OPP dealing with provincial matters, as well as contract and non-contract policing across the province, and that's how we have them in Clarence Rockland. Some municipalities elect to establish a municipal police service under the Police Services Act, and where police services are not provided by a municipality, they are by default provided by the Ontario Provincial Police, or it could be provided through another service through a contract, as the case may be. And then underneath all of that, sort of addressing, there are municipal bylaws, our municipal law enforcement officers who are appointed under the authority of the Police Services Act. So, this is the section in the Police Services Act that says it's every municipality's responsibility to provide adequate policing services in accordance with its needs, and they have to include a whole bunch of services. So, I've heard discussion, and I don't remember if it was from specific councillors or members of the public, asking, "Could we establish our own municipal police service?" You could. That's an option for council, that's an option that you could choose to consider. The reality is that when you look at all of the different services that have to be provided, it would be very costly. So, to try and provide all of the different services, having an emergency response capacity, a public order capacity, in addition to law and crime prevention, and all of the non-uniform roles that go into a police service, it would be very, very expensive for a small municipality to take on, but it is an option for council. So, we have some options as the city of Clarence Rockland in terms of how we deal with that. We can establish our own police service, as we mentioned, or we can enter into an agreement. So, there are options there. You could establish a joint police service, there are areas across the province that have done that. You could contract police services from another force, so the option would be we could explore with Ottawa if there was interest there. I don't know, in the past, that has not been something that they've wanted to look at, but you never know. We can choose to enter into a contract, or negotiate a contract with the OPP to provide contracted police services. Or, under section 5.1, it says if we don't establish a police service, if as Clarence Rockland we don't have a police service, the OPP shall provide the police service to the municipality. So, that's where we are today. So, Clarence Rockland does not have a police service. As a result, police services are provided by the OPP under this section of the act, and when you look at your chart in front of you, you're going to see the two columns, one is with a contract and one is non-contract, and you'll see that section number at the top. That's how we get there. That section carries on and provides that basically any cost for that policing is due payable to the Ministry of Finance. They basically tell our treasurer what that cost is going to be, and that's what the cost is. There's a big... Some of the previous council may recall, there's a big, long, complicated formula in terms of how that gets explained. If you're curious on that, I would defer to our colleagues to try and explain that to you, but the basic premise is a base service cost and then a cost for calls per service. So, if you're a really busy municipality, your costs are a little bit higher. If you're a slower municipality, your costs are lower.
But at one time, I know, contract was a lot more expensive. Now, has that changed, or...
Yes. So, to answer your question, Mr Mayor, the costing for going into a contract service versus a non-contract with the OPP, your costs are almost identical. There is a slight difference if you decide to go into a contract with the OPP, we have to establish a police services board. In a municipality of our size, that's three members, their remuneration is stipulated under the Police Services Act, each one's entitled... It's in my slide here, I think it's $300 a year. So, it's not a big cost difference, but understand that that's based on the same service level that you have today in terms of policing. So, you could ask for additional services or enhanced FTEs if you wanted additional traffic enforcement, or you want a community liaison officer, or what do they call them? School safety officer? School resource officer? So, there are different options that council could choose to say, "Hey, I'd really like to enhance traffic enforcement." So, if you wanted to do that, there's an additional cost for additional officers to provide that service. If you kept the service essentially the same as it is today, your contract cost and your non-contract cost are essentially the same with the addition of the police services board and whatever remuneration is established for those three members.
But if we had the contract now, we still don't have any officers stopping trucks, let's say overload during half-load and all this, do we?
So, that's a question in terms of how we want to address some of our municipal bylaws and our heavy truck routes, and how we want to deal with that. Typically, so if you looked at a contracted police service, and Hawkesbury would be an example of that, they've contracted the OPP and established in their agreement that they want the OPP to be able to enforce some of their municipal bylaws. Again, to my understanding, and my colleagues can correct me if I'm wrong, they don't have dedicated officers assigned to municipal law enforcement, to bylaw enforcement, but they have the capability to enforce municipal bylaws if the need arose.
But this used to be a service offered by bylaw officers, and that was switched over to OPP.
So, yeah, my understanding is that Hawkesbury still employs municipal bylaw officers that cover the bulk of stuff, but if there was an after-hours call or something, a noise complaint is an example, a Hawkesbury detachment member could issue a ticket.
Yeah, but I'm talking about half-load, overload trucks.
Correct.
It's still OPP that has to do that, or I don't think we have permission to go... To give the bylaw has permission of getting tickets.
So, the biggest, and that's, Mr Mayor, I'm glad you brought it up, because really that's the point of the discussion tonight, is a question of how do we get the vehicle stopped to issue the ticket in the first place? So, we've passed a number of municipal bylaws within the city of Clarence Rockland, some long before this council or the previous. The challenge is with some of those issues, how do we stop the truck? So, under the Highway Traffic Act, a municipal bylaw officer has no authority to stop the truck, which is where we're running into our inherent problem. We can't flag that truck over to stop it, you need a police officer to do that. So, there have been joint initiatives in the past where our bylaw staff would work with a police officer, and the police officer could stop the truck, and then we could say, "Hey, you're not supposed to be on this road," and issue a ticket. It's just, it has to become a joint venture because we don't have the authority to stop the truck. Another example would be our snowmobile bylaws, we've got a motorized snow vehicle bylaw, says you can't drive a snowmobile on the sidewalk. We don't have the authority to stop the snowmobile. So, there is a Motorized Snow Vehicles Act in the province that says only certain people have the authority to stop a snowmobile, or to signal to the driver of a snowmobile to stop. We don't have that authority, which is sort of why we're having this discussion tonight. Just more for council's information and education than anything, but like I say, there's some options if you wanted to go down that road in terms of how we could look at that.
Can some of those authorities be delegated to the bylaws?
Possibly. And I... So, I'm going to get to that in sort of the tail end of this presentation. It's a question, because I don't believe it's been done in Ontario. It looks like it might be possible under the legislation, but we would be forging a new path.
How about we let him finish his whole presentation? I think some questions are going to get answered, too.
They're good questions, though. So, we have the OPP here. The OPP provide policing services to our municipality without an OPP contract. What that means under the Police Services Act is that they can establish a Community Policing Advisory Committee, or CPAC Advisory Committee, which the mayor typically sits on and sometimes sends me, to go and have discussions with the detachment commander. So, we have Acting Inspector Duval here, and the municipalities in the region covered under Russell County that do not have policing contracts participate in the CPAC advisory. So, we go and sit down, and I think there's three municipalities that sit down and have regular discussions with the detachment commander, and sort of say, "These are issues that are raising their head in our area." Speeding through the villages, or traffic along 17, or whatever the issue of the day is, we can certainly provide that guidance or that feedback back to the detachment commander, who can then try and prioritize resources to deal with it. And if nothing else, those advisory committees give us the opportunity to network with our detachment commander, which is then pivotal when we run into major situations like, say, the flood of 2017. So, because we've established those relationships, because the detachment commander and I have the chance to network on a somewhat regular basis, we have that built-up rapport, that built-up relationship that we can then leverage for help when we need it. If you decided to go with an OPP contract, so if council said, "Hey, I'm interested in looking at going into an OPP contract," we would have to establish a police services board, which I mentioned earlier, and the persons that are on that board are established under the Police Services Act. So, it would be the mayor, or an appointed member of council, one member appointed from the community, and one member appointed by the lieutenant governor and council. Those would be the three members that would form the police services board representing the city of Clarence Rockland, and they have to be, according to that act, compensated at least $300 a year. So, that's your additional expense. $900 a year as a minimum. I guess you, council could choose to establish a different remuneration package, but that's the minimum established in the Police Services Act. So, currently, and Inspector Duval can correct me if I'm wrong, but currently in Clarence Rockland, we're provided police services under section 5.1, which is non-contract. We have 20 sworn officers that work out of the Rockland detachment, sub-detachment, however we're calling this, part of the group. We have four shifts of four members, plus some non-uniform staff, and a staff sergeant working out of there now.
Out of Russell.
Out of Russell, okay. There's a... And council will remember last year, last year we converted the admin to full-time role? So, there's a full-time admin person in there, there are two auxiliary or volunteer officers that work out of that office, and the main detachment's down in Umbra. So, this is where you see the chart, so there's a whole bunch of information in this chart. I don't know, did you guys want, please? You're good? Anything else? You're going to look at... The IT guy's going to refer to his IT device? Perfect? Okay? All right, here. So, the biggest things that I would point out into this, there's a lot of information in this table. The big things really are to sort of understand how the governance model works. There's information on how the detachment commander is selected and evaluated, there's talks of the complaint system and how that stuff runs through. The item to me that's really important is when you look at item 10, that talks about bylaw enforcement. So, in a contract model, you could specify that there is a component of bylaw enforcement that you want as part of your contract, that's negotiated with the OPP. The reality is, they have a number of sort of standard language contracts, so there's going to be sort of some standard language in there, to try and get something really abstract, maybe a challenge, but the standard language may provide for some options for that. Without a contract, the Police Services Act says that the OPP have no responsibility for municipal bylaws, but as I'm told, there certainly could be some discussion with the detachment commander if there were particular things that were a priority, such as half-loads. That could be something that we could have some discussion on with the detachment commander and try and work out some agreement, just understand that we have limited resources to be able to try and deal with some of those things. Does that make sense? Any questions on this sort of comparison between the two?
Well, it's just a comment really, is that years ago, there was a big difference between contract and non-contract, and I remember that's why we didn't go in contract. They were adding a car, officer, the whole works, even the gun, and everything else was added on the bill itself, and that's why the council had turned away from contract. But if the price is the same, there's no see a problem there. And I'm sure you have...
When you said that some agreement can be done on some specific issues, that would be, that would... It's not the same as a contract. Contract means that we full services from the OPP. So, an agreement would be with the non-contract, but on very specific things we could, if the resources, human resources are available, then we could do it.
Yeah, so it's important for council to know that in both models, really, a municipal bylaw enforcement issue or call is a billable call. So, that's billable to us, above and beyond what's normally included. So, if we wanted them to handle a whole slew of bylaw issues for the city, we would expect to receive an invoice for a number of billable calls for time put towards those tasks. Is that fair?
Does the contract come with a new building?
We can have a separate discussion. The short answer is no.
So, I understand the whole contract thing. The system we have now, what we have now as a service, is are there minimum requirements of the OPP to service Clarence Rockland? The reason I ask is because we've seen a number of instances where we've had a major accident on the highway, and the OPP, I guess they called you or whatever, and they said, "We can't send officers to do traffic control because we don't have anybody on..." So, are there minimum requirements, and are we getting those minimum requirements under what we're paying right now?
Okay. I don't know if I can answer if there's a statutory minimum or something established from a health and safety perspective, and again, I would ask my colleagues to correct me if I'm wrong, but certainly, they would never endeavor to have an officer working by themselves. So, if you've got four shifts of four, you've got four people on shift today, if one member was off sick, one member was on course, you're down to two officers. If for some reason you ended up shy of that, and I know in the past, they've had to shuffle officers around, including from other jurisdictions, other counties, in order to maintain, and again, we would never put an officer on by themselves, we'd make sure that they had a partner, is that fair? During the night, okay. So, they do their best to make sure that there's, that we're never down to a single officer? There could be extreme situations where that happens. The challenge in policing is, and again, I'm not a police officer, so I don't want to speak for them, but the challenge is really when you run into multiple calls for service happening at a simultaneous time. Take bad weather as an example, you've got multiple vehicle collisions going on, there's a limited number of resources to try and handle those incidents. Someone has to investigate the collision, there's also the subsequent or the secondary issue of controlling traffic, and trying to make sure that the scene is safe for responders that are there or working there. In Ottawa, there's a huge number of officers working any given day, and typically, they can move officers around within their municipal jurisdiction. Once you start getting into the more rural areas of the province, the OPP are one of the largest policing organizations in North America, but they're spread across the entire province of Ontario. So, any, you know, if we had a major incident in Clarence Rockland, the OPP can bring a huge number of resources to bear on that, it's the travel time to get you.
Just to help clarify, I think to me, there's no difference between a contract and a non-contract situation. We are, as the OPP legislative, required to have provide adequate and effective policing services, and that's basically our duty service in that, and I think there was a slide on that. So, the specific operational issue where perhaps that one day where we couldn't provide an officer, I can't, obviously, I can't speak specifically to that because I don't have knowledge of the exact details of that, but the whole idea of service delivery within the OPP is the integrated service delivery model. So, what you have is you don't, it's not, the whole service delivery is not FTE-based for each municipality. We are legislatively required to provide adequate and effective policing services. When it comes to operational issues, the whole service delivery is designed to be flexible. We have officers that can work in many locations, they don't, they're not just, you know, for example, we need officers coming up from Storonton to Dass and Blingary for a specific incident, we have the ability to cull those officers in for assistance, so it provides, it's built in that. So, but to speak, does that help kind of answer your question?
It does to a point, I guess a subsequent question to that would be, or comment, besides Hawkesbury, who else has a, in Blingary, Chris Scott Russell, who has a contract with the OPP?
Nation does. Castle? No, Castle does not. Nation does.
Castle and Ember. I'm CSDG, but I'm not entirely sure that has... So, just to further that, you can, on our website, www.opp.ca, you actually can go in, there's a web page under, if you type in a search box, the search box is on the main page, you type in municipal policing, that'll bring up the municipal policing page, and there's a number of links that I believe is under the OPP building model link on the right side, if you click on that, there's actually a table where you can go in and click into all the municipalities that the OPP pleases. It's actually outlined on a neat little spreadsheet, and you can actually filter through, and you can see which municipalities are section 10 versus which municipalities are section 5.1. You can actually see what each municipality is paying for per year. So, that, to that question at least, you would be able to filter through the list and figure within this area which municipalities are actually under contract with the OPP.
Yeah, it's just I figure with a population of 26,000 residents, you know, even if you don't have a contract with the OPP, you would expect a minimum level of service that would protect 26,000 residents and serve 26,000 residents. So, the last thing you want is to have a municipality forced into a contract to get additional resources and to pay more because you're not getting the minimum... You know what I'm getting at?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, that's, and that's, and that's a, I'm not saying that's what's happening, it's just that it's, you know, there's, when we're discussing these matters around budget time and we see the number that we have to pay into the OPP every year, which is fine, but when you see a lot of instances where we don't see, or we don't feel we need, we have the appropriate level of servicing, that's when it gets concerning to residents and to council.
Yeah, and the message I could say is, if we're not, we don't force municipalities into contracts, it's obviously simply their choice.
Forced by, by children.
By necessity, or yeah, I can understand where you're going. So, yeah, the idea is, it's not a two-tier system, it's not because you sign up for a contract, you're going to get the better service. The contract simply, I think Mr Wilson has really explained it well, and the contract gives you some options for, for example, for these enhanced positions. The key to remember, too, about enhanced positions, people will think, "Well, you know what, we'll sign into a contract, that way we can get more officers on the road to address those issues when those winter days come and we're short-staffed." You got to remember, though, those positions, those enhanced positions are not designed to boost the frontline. Again, we are legislatively required to provide the adequate and effective police service. Those enhanced positions are specifically to address specific roles. It's not designed to boost up your numbers because you want more cruisers, it's designed to address, we've had specific issues with traffic enforcement, or I want an officer full-time in schools to address and liaise with our students, that's what it's designed for. So, you know, contract, non-contract, again, we're trying to level the playing field, and in essence, it's really the same thing.
When we're talking about the minimum level of service of OPP, like, is there a number of officers at all times that are all within the limit of the city of Clarence Rockland?
That is more if... Sir, can you just say that question again?
We're talking about the level of service.
Yes.
And is there, like, when we talk about the number of police officers that are at one time in this, within the city of Clarence Rockland, do you have, when you're talking about the minimum level of service, does that mean that there will be at least, at least one, you know, that would be always available within the boundaries of the city of Clarence Rockland?
I understand your question, so that the system, it's, the billing model and the way we run our service, it's not, it's not based on FTEs. So, for example...
Can you tell us what FTE is?
Sorry, my apologies, full-time equivalent. Okay, my apologies. It's okay. It's the lingo I get, I get to work with Dan and Dame. So, you know, for example, say if Rockland decides to sign a contract, you're not, you don't sign a contract saying that you'll have 10 officers in the detachment at all time, only have to. The billing model doesn't work that way, the billing model is designed, yet again, I go back to this phrase, and it gets a little tiresome because you always hear it and then wonder what the world it means, but it's designed to provide that adequate and effective service, meaning that you will have an officer. When you pay that, the base service, and then the calls for service, the base service basically is that, that almost like a guarantee, we have to provide that adequate and effective service, so you have to have an officer available to respond as needed. The number of officers, that is an operational decision.
Okay, so you're not, so what you're saying is, there may not be any officers at some time, you know, in the city, but if we, there is a need, then you may request some, an officer somewhere else to come into the city.
Correct. It's designed, and again...
I find that for the amount of money that you pay, and not having at least one officer at all times within the boundaries, being the biggest city, to me, this is unacceptable.
Our bylaw officers finish at what time?
Right now, they finish at 8:00 if there's someone on. So, we have a staff of four officers, one working early mornings till mid-afternoon, the other one starting late mornings and finishing at 8:00 at night.
So, from 8:00 at night to late in the morning, Clarence Rockland doesn't have bylaw officers. So, if a call comes in for loud party or disturbance that is bylaw-related, they will help, I know they will, but when you have a contract, it means they can enforce all the bylaws that we have in our city. Not only it provides better service to our residents, but also it gives them more discretion. Instead of maybe writing a big fine, they can resort to a bylaw, sometimes a really smooth situation. And I think it's the gap you're trying to address with this report, is that, and I just want to add to Mr Lalonde's comment, is that the security and the level of service by a contract, PSA section 10, it doesn't cost us a lot more, but it gives a lot more service to the community and a lot more response in case of certain calls pass our bylaw times. It also gives us the right program, reducing rear-driving enforcement, that's included in the contract. So, there's, there are a few things that we get if we get into a contract.
But you said a cost to that for every bylaws, every type of bylaws?
No. If you're on a contract, you're good.
Sorry, and I should have introduced myself, my apologies. I'm Ken Key, I'm Sergeant out of the Municipal Policing Bureau at Headquarters in Rhode. So, just to the point, though, I just want to clarify with ride programs, you get that either in a contract or non-contract location. For ride programs, that's included in the base service for any municipality. There are sheets... According to the sheet. Yeah, and those are grants. So, there are options, if you go into a contract, there are some extra money for producing ride programs, but I'm sure, and the inspector could clarify this, but we do ride regardless of whether we get grants or not, in every municipality. I also want to make it very clear, too, with the whole bylaw question, if you have a contract with the OPP, yes, there is the assumption in there that we, based on an agreement between the municipality and the local OPP detachment to enforce certain bylaws, that there is still that option in a non-contract location, you could still draw up some sort of agreement, so that's still, that option is there. So, I just, just want to make that very clear. So I just, just want to make that very clear, just don't consider that, well, we need the bylaw enforcement, therefore we have to enter into a contract. That's not the case at all. Just so that's understood.
Okay, sorry, so just a couple more slides. So some, and this is by no means a comprehensive list, but I wanted to give council some idea of some of the bylaws that we're running into, some challenges enforcing currently. We've got our ATD bylaw passed in 2005, and again, some of the issues are, we've established speed limits and stopping of ATDs within that bylaw, but we don't have the authority to enforce it. And same under motorized snow vehicles bylaws, we've got a similar issue there, we've got speed limits where they can operate, where they can't operate, how do we enforce some of those things? The Using Care of Streets talks about stopping vehicles and where vehicles are allowed to be stopping. Our Traffic and Parking bylaw deals with our heavy truck routes and how we're going to deal with some of those issues, driving on closed roads, circumventing barricades, those kinds of issues. And then one of the other challenges that we're struggling with is just dealing with traffic control and motor vehicle collisions, particularly if our police resources are stretched due to other calls or other needs. So we're running into issues where we don't necessarily have authorities under certain pieces of provincial legislation to do options here. Contract or not, may not resolve all of those issues because if you still don't have resources, you still run into an issue. So when Dan Schwanjaer had asked a question about what are some of the options and what could we look at, we can leave it as is and acknowledge that some of the bylaws may be a challenge enforcing. We can repeal some unenforceable bylaws or sections of. We could look at contracting the OPP to provide some stopgap measures with components or enter into a separate agreement with the OPP to try and do something along those lines. Your last option, which again, I mentioned this earlier, your question, councillor, was could we, could we get the authority for the bylaw officers? And the answer to that is, I don't know. There are some examples in Ontario where the, under the Police Services Act, there is a provision that allows for the creation of special constables. Special constables under the act basically are given police authority within the very tight confines of that appointment. So an example of that that's probably most prevalent to us would be OC Transport. So OC Transport has special constables that are given police-like authority within the special confines of that, which in the most part is to deal with OC Transport property. There are a couple of examples where special constables are used in the broader context. So you see them on university campuses such as Carleton. And there are some sort of unique special circumstances like Niagara Parks Police, which are special constables appointed for the enforcement of certain legislation in the Niagara Parks region, so right around Niagara Falls. There are some options to look at that, and the Police Services Act allows for an option to look at that. So if council wanted to explore that, again, this is, I'll call it, and correct me if I'm wrong, gents, I would call this uncharted territory in Ontario. There are examples in other provinces in Canada that are doing something similar to that, but it's not commonplace in Ontario to do what we're, what I'm talking about right now. So there is an option to try and look at that. There's two ways that you can get special constables under the act, if that was a decision of council. If you had a contract with the OPP, you therefore have a police services board. And so one option would be, your police services board can choose to appoint special constables for a certain appointment, that then has to go to the solicitor general for the solicitor general's approval. Your other option without a contract is that you need to get the OPP commissioner's approval for your special constables, and then that goes to the solicitor general for approval. So either way, the solicitor general has to sign off on what you're proposing to do. On the one hand, you get the OPP commissioner to do it, on the other hand, you get a police services board to try and initiate it. There's still a question mark as to whether or not the solicitor general would approve with whatever that intention was, but it might be possible. There is an option in the Police Services Act that you could look at that. And so I put in my presentation some examples of special constables in Ontario. So we mentioned public transit such as OC Transport, Toronto Transit, Metrolinks. There are a number of university campuses, the closest to us would be Carleton. Now, you see some community housing examples, Toronto being one of those where they're using special constables to have police-like authority within a community housing complex. And then you've got court security and transport, OPP uses special constables for those capacities, and they have a certain authority. There are government security agencies such as the Parliamentary Protective Service or PPS that you see on the hill in Ottawa, those are special constables, as well as sort of the one exemption to the common rule, which is Niagara Parks Police, and although they're given the title of police, that was, from what I can gather, established because they've been around since forever. When the falls started flowing, they were around, so they've been sort of grandfathered in and allowed to continue with that title. Most common, you'll see this model used in other provinces, so Alberta's been using a multi-tiered law enforcement model where they have community peace officers doing certain components, they have a more traditional bylaw officer, then they have an officer that does some traffic responsibilities, both of those are unarmed positions. And then you move into police constables, either RCMP or municipal policing. Saskatchewan started down that road with community safety officers, and I have a little bit of experience with that when I was in Saskatchewan, which is why I was curious about seeing if this is something that council's interested in venturing down or not. That's really what the purpose of this presentation was, the topic.
I would be curious to find out, I don't know if there are some stats already done on that, but how many municipalities, small municipalities, go with constable before they go with a full contract with the OPP? Is it like a good transition between going completely with the OPP, with the contract, or going with the constable?
With special constables? I don't believe anyone in Ontario is using special constables for the, for what we're talking about right now. I don't think it's happening anywhere in Ontario. It seems to be that it's possible in the legislation, but I don't, I'm not aware of an example of it happening in Ontario.
And what about the rest of Canada?
Saskatchewan and Alberta have examples of that running today. I was, I was part of that in North Battleford when I was out there, but again, it's a different province, different provincial legislation.
It's something that was brought up when we went to a few conferences when the Liberals were there, but now it seems to be...
But otherwise, you said that otherwise is also using it, using them for...
Within very special contexts, so just their transit. So OC Transport has special constables to deal with enforcement matters on their OC Transport buses and trains.
So would you, would you recommend that? Like, would you say that there would be a good solution, or it's, or it's very limited with the kind of services that it could do?
Well, it'd be an extra cost too, wouldn't it?
Well, it's hard for me to say, I guess. Really what I wanted to do was, was bring to council the issue that we have some challenges with some of the municipal bylaws that we have in place today and with our ability to direct traffic. So I know there's been lots of questions raised in the past, can I get bylaw to go direct traffic for this bike race, or this parade, or this whatever? And the challenge is, we have no statutory authority under the Highway Traffic Act to direct traffic. We're good-natured people, and in the past, we've gone out and done our best to try and help the community out or help a special event out, but if there was ever an incident out of a bylaw officer trying to direct traffic, there's a huge amount of liability assumed there. We have no authority to stand there and try and direct traffic. And so that's, that's one of the challenges with directing traffic, and we're trying to find a way to, to address some of council's wishes and what seem to be council's priorities. We don't have the authority to do it. We can either contract or try and negotiate with the OPP to try and get some of those things done, they are equally strapped for resources. The nice thing about trying to pursue special constables and the reason I think you're seeing it in Alberta and Saskatchewan is that they're a municipal, they could be, depending on how it gets set up, and we don't know because it's not yet done in Ontario. But I can give you the example from North Battleford, Saskatchewan, where we basically took our bylaw officers, went through a number of different hoops to create them as special constables, and they were then a municipal resource that could do certain things to help with council's priorities of the day, whether it be half loads, whether it be whatever. So you have some nice options there, but again, it's uncharted territory in Ontario.
In regards to, right now, we're under a non-contract. Do we have any side agreements, like you've mentioned, that there's a possibility of doing? Are there any tier knowledge that we have in place right now, just strictly?
None today. There's no agreements in place.
Just my personal knowledge, just curious about it.
I guess, to provide some context to that, we have an excellent working relationship with our local OPP detachment, the OPP commander, as well as the staff on the road working out of Rockland. So when there are issues, for example, a loud noise at a party, we can act on what the police officers deal with after hours. So if they go to that loud party and they tell them, you guys got to shut this down, if the officers provide our bylaw staff with the details of that incident, as what's known as a will say, basically saying, if I go to court, this is what I'm going to say, our officers can then act on that and still prosecute under a municipal bylaw based on the evidence that were given by the OPP officer that attended. That, that happens sometimes, it's not very common, but it does happen from time to time. And that's, I guess, and, you know, a testament to the working relationship that we have with the OPP today. We're trying to find ways to make it work as best we can.
Any other questions?
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for your patience.
So, let's go on to correspondence. None? Notices of motion? None? Question period? Does anyone have any question of town council? None? Fine. United Counties of Prescott Russell, you know that we've adopted the budget. I voted against that budget because I believe that the 3.8% basic tax increase was too high. And my argument with regard to the Prescott Russell residents, well, my position was that we should not draw upon the budget to pay for future expenditures, but it should be drawn upon the capital expenditure budget. We're talking about the $5 million straight expenditure. If we wouldn't have spent that amount, we wouldn't have faced a 3.8 increase. Well, what can I say? Yes, but other items are forthcoming and that, that should prove interesting. Let's go on now to the next item. Item 9.1, fence bylaw exception requested by Pierre LaFontaine at 25 Clarence Court. Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor? Because Mr. Renee is in attendance strictly for item 9.4, maybe we can discuss 9.4 so that he might go back to his home along with members of his family, or we can deal with 9.4 immediately? Well, we can just deal with 9.1 and then we'll go on to 9.4. That council approved by resolution, the request for an exemption of the fence bylaw 2016-96, section 5.1, allowing a fence to be higher than one meter in the front of the yard for Pierre LaFontaine at 25 Clarence Court. Seconded, any questions? Well, I know the report states that everything's okay. Well, it's a neighbor dispute, yes, but we're in the process right now of going against an adopted bylaw to resolve a neighbor dispute that's sort of involved. So I'm wondering if we're wandering onto a slippery slope right now. We deal with this particular situation other than granting an exemption to the fence bylaw? I know it's, I know it's not very interesting to get, getting involved in a neighbor dispute, but if another similar situation arises whereby we'd be compelled to vote upon an exemption, well, councillor Schwanjaer, we received in previous, we refused in previous instances to grant that particular request, we stated that it was too much of a delicate situation. Well, I had occasion to visit Mr. LaFontaine, I took a look at the situation also, and I read the fence bylaw. And if you take a look at the spirit looming behind the bylaw, if you take a look at the obstruction that this causes, you have to wonder what kind of look we have, we wish to give our city. They're in a, they're in a cul-de-sac, and all properties are in sort of like a pie chart configuration. There's no obstruction from one neighbor to another, there are no visual problems inherent to that situation. So from an urban planner perspective, there's nothing that contravenes this particular bylaw. Of course, it stands to reason that in Moore's Village, you would never think of coming across a similarly type situation because it doesn't jive, if you wish, with the spirit behind, or the intent behind this particular bylaw. But if you can visualize the situation right now that prevails there, there's a huge snowbank there with a fence built up along that area, all neighbors are in agreement that this is not a problem. Well, the intent behind the bylaw is respected, and all neighbors are in agreement with this bylaw. I have no problem that for all neighbors respecting the spirit of the bylaw. Well, I'm in agreement with Mr. Bouchard. It doesn't go against the configuration or the, I'm in agreement with the recommendation. I had occasion to meet with this gentleman during the electoral campaign that I was involved in. This individual had a problem and a problem with his neighbor. And the fence is built up behind an electrical post or hydro post. I agree, Mr. Mayor, but the principle behind all of this is that we're getting involved in solving a neighbor dispute and by going against a bylaw already. Councillor Schwanjaer? Well, if we are to adopt a spirit of reconciliation, when will things end really? I think that we have to go along with the bylaw. The bylaw states such and such. The risks that we might get involved in other neighbors, neighbor disputes is enormous because all neighbors there are living close together. Of course, if we create this particular precedent constantly, we'll be besieged by requests as days go by, we'll have great difficulty in having this bylaw respected then. So I'm asking you then, as to who is in favor in adopting this particular resolution? Five? All right. So, the motion has passed. Mr. Darch, our favorite, well, let's deal with item 9.4. Mr. Darch, we're sorry, just sit back just a little bit, I know that you're anxious to tell us about this, but you'll have to wait just a few minutes more. All right. Sorry about that. Go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry? Go ahead. Whereas City Council mandated Community Services to evaluate the possibility of the city of Clarence and Rockland to become the presenter of an annual program of varied performances at the Optimist Performance Hall in Rockland, and whereas Community Services does not have the resources in place to develop an annual program, and be it resolved that City Council authorizes Community Services to solicit proposals for the management of an annual program for the Optimist Performance Hall, and be it resolved that Council authorizes Community Services to enter into a service agreement if the proposal is suitable and results in no net cost to the city as recommended. Seconded by councillor Zett. Any questions? Councillor Grimaire? Well, I think that this is a great idea. Now, Mr. Bouchard, when we're talking about net costs, could it be that we might have a suggestion whereby we might put forward some funds and we might recoup them in the future? That's right. You see, there was an amount of $25,000 and a further $50,000 amount that was discussed with regards to expenditures and potential income. There is a risk that we do incur. I don't know if we might expound a bit more on this. Well, when we entered into budgetary talks, I dealt with this particular issue, that's why I sent the relevant documentation to everyone, and I like it, the way in which the report was drafted. There was mention that high taxes were paid for performance hall, but we had no prevailing inherent to that performance hall. We didn't have the resources to develop proper programming. This particular endeavor allows us to do so. And one of the promoters that would be interested in working alongside the city of Clarence and Rockland, there might be others, if we take a look at the financial windfall compared to the risk involved, we're not talking about a break-even point, we're talking here about conservative figures here that, along with stated goals, that can be easily achieved. The city of Getz, you know, exploits overseas, or has, different companies overseeing different performance halls there. The individual who prepared this report is the previous MIFO artistic director who has experience in preparing similar type projects for nonprofit organizations. I believe this individual is quite confident of the product, knows where municipal, municipal interests lie. They're not here to make money, and we're not here to make a great amount of money. The municipality might make a profit, but the purpose behind all of this is not to make a profit, but to put Clarence Rockland on the map, have worthwhile cultural life that's ongoing, have mothers and fathers go and have a supper, and leave the baby city, take care of the children at home while they go, and it might help also to promote... It might help also to promote our culture, yes, both French and English culture. There's a great potential behind all of this. Let's start off with a small contract. This is what's proposed, but we might tap into these resources that might involve River Festival activities. Did this individual take a look at the Performance Hall? Yes, that person did. He knows, he's quite familiar with the Performance Hall's resources and he knows the type of artists that might play at that Performance Hall. There's a potential on a long-term basis that needs to be tapped in. You know, the Schenkman Arts Center took a while to get going and people are now all aware of where it is and people from Geth know, attended these shows. Did the City of Ottawa give grants to the Schenkman Arts Center? Well, when the MIFO operates within the confines of this particular project, well, my constraint is that we're tapping into public funds and I'm wondering why this company is not investing anything. I know that if we don't risk anything, we won't obtain anything. I know there's a risk. I understand Mr. Bouchard's contention. We're still putting in public funds and we're running a risk of, you know, incurring a loss. Well, it stands to reason that these people are running a business. They calculated the risk involved. It remains a risk, but this is a business. And so, do we want this company to manage the Performance Hall or will this hall be opened up to all types of press areas?
We will go out to tender so that it will be open to the market for everybody to bid and put a proposal forward to the municipality. So it wouldn't specifically be...
Mr. Simard? It's not a risk that's incurred by the company, but by us. The company does not run any risk whatsoever in operating this. Well, this is what is proposed. Mr. Irwin, do you have anything else to add? Well, we might include it in an agreement that will be arrived at with this entity. If they need, well, we need your money, but we need to guarantee a certain type of risk that's incurred. I have no problem, but I often, life taught me that there are unforeseeable circumstances that might impact the final result. Councilor Chouigna? Well, if it's not feasible, if there are not enough tickets sold, there's always a way of canceling a show. This has happened in Gethno where some shows are canceled and it's done elsewhere. If organizers notice that not enough tickets are sold, well, they just cancel the performance. Well, we'll go to tender, of course, and whoever wins the tender wins. Well, we might decide not to go along with this and that's it. One last point I'd like to make is this. Let's not forget that in the spirit of community servicing, there's a certain concept of offering a certain quality of life and adopting a vision with regard to what type of municipality we wish to have. We are all in agreement that with regards to our arenas of the YMCA, we're giving a lot of thousands of dollars of grants to these particular establishments because we want to offer a level of service to our citizenry. But if things were to turn sour in this regard, then you run the risk of incurring a loss of $7,000 or $8,000, for example. Given the economical development advantages involved and if the Optimist Club is interested in, you know, running the coach business out of all of this, you know, they benefit from this and we benefit from this. There's the type of vision also we ought to adopt to enhance the quality of life of our citizenry. There's only a few thousand dollars worth of investment, just a semiteer economy that's required. Mr. Boucher? We run the risk also, Mr. Mayor, before they implement a particular cultural program and before they undertake to put on different types of shows, there might only be two of those that could get involved. You know, they might think of putting on some shows in June. I don't know if they'd like to put on shows in September, October, November, December because that, I think, would be quite an aggressive approach to the situation. Mr. Irwin, do you have anything else to add? Not at this point in time, Mr. Mayor. Any other questions? Thank you very much then. All right. So are we going to vote on this, Mr. Mayor? Well, are those in favor? Fine, carried then. Mr. Darch, now we're with you. Mr. Simard, could you please read the resolution as it stands? Whereas staff has committed to provide a resubmission report to the Ministry of Environment, Conservation and Parks in early March 2019. And whereas the city and its consultant WSB have undertaken required additional studies and analysis to address the concerns and requirements expressed by the MECP in its August 15, 2018 letter. And whereas the city is now in a position to transmit the resubmission report to the MECP, be it resolved that the Committee of Hall receives this report, INS, INF, 2019-12 be received as information. I'm going to use it in English and I read the report and I'll put my question in French.
Agreement or what we want to propose to the ministry? We are agreeing to put an extra layer on top of the old Notre Dame dam, I assume, to prevent anything from leaking or to... Is it possible to do tests before to see if right now everything is holding to prevent that cost?
Yeah, certainly, I should answer that question. If it's suitable, we would certainly do tests to use as much of what is there as possible. That capping layer is critical to the acceptance ultimately by the ministry because their biggest concern, and it's, I guess it's itemized in their August 15 letter, is that their biggest concern is that they don't want surface waters migrating into the landfill material or into the leachate. So we have to prevent that migration.
But if for the past 30 years, nothing has gone in?
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
But I know they're really firm on that too.
I told them we would design it and that we would give them a design that has a certain impermeability factor. I'm not necessarily technical and all that stuff, but anyway, we'll make sure that it doesn't go from the surface through the layer into the landfill materials. If that material that's there is suitable and perhaps, let's say it's not suitable as the impervious layer, there's two layers there, right? There's a 600-millimeter layer and there's 150. If it's not suitable for the 600, it might be stripped away, put in your impermeable layer and then use it as your vegetation layer, if I can call it that. But we'll try to optimize whatever we can.
Because we're cutting down costs if we do that, right?
Yeah, I mean, the report indicates the sort of the budget levels. It's close. We're close to the line with the estimates we've got. Now, they're at what I refer to as a Class D level, which is really just based, there isn't any design consideration, it's more concept plans and the like. But as you go into detailed design, your costs will get refined. But right now, I can say for both the stormwater management and for the landfill closure plan, it looks like the funding is adequate. The fortunate part, I think, and it speaks to the timing of this, I know there are those that would like to see this constructed very, very quickly here, it's not going to happen. I think I indicated in the report, the ministry's own internal review procedures are going to control. So just the submission of this document, which I believe is a significant milestone in the delivery of these projects, it's going to take at least five months for them to review that. They are probably going to be coming back to us with questions, clarifications. And just want to pause on that one for a minute. I only want to entertain clarifications and questions on the preferred solution. I do not want them going into all the options we considered, which are detailed in the report, will be forever and a day. So I'm going to talk to their people and say, we'll entertain questions in that, but on the preferred solution. But it's going to take a good five months for that and then you're going to have to go in and retain a consultant to do the design work. And then once the design is done, then you have to apply for an environmental certificate of approval, ECA. Historically, they take about eight months. Now, I guess what I'm hoping, I know, what I'm hoping is the review process that we get into on the front end, going through this report, will shorten that. So I think optimistically, if, let's say, the middle of 2020, we're into tendering and construction, that would be good.
Okay, thank you.
Let's not forget, we got an order to fix that. We got no choice.
His options are very good.
For us at this point, once we've delivered the report to them, the ball's in their court. We're in no rush to do this thing because it's all debt anyways.
Well, once it's all approved, you've got to get done before the...
No, no, I mean, if they take a year to review everything and approve everything and then, you know, until, I mean, it's...
True to a point. My only concern would be the longer things move out there, you know, yourselves and other projects, costs can start to increase. I think it's in our interest to move this along. I mean, this file has been around a long, long time and I'm hoping, I guess I'm optimistic, is that we're starting to bring it to a conclusion. But I would like to fast-track it as much as possible, but I don't think fast-tracking is going to mean construction this year. Other questions?
All those in favor? Carried then, thank you. Let's go on now to the MOU Water Project with the Nation Municipality item. Mr. Levert? Whereas, Mr. Mayor, Vice and Hunter LLP have been retained by the city to review the terms and conditions of the memorandum of understanding and that revisions have been made accordingly. And whereas the memorandum of understanding has been negotiated to the satisfaction of the Director of Infrastructure and Planning, be it resolved that the Committee of the Hall recommends that council approve the bylaw to authorize the mayor and the city clerk to sign the memorandum of understanding with the Nation Municipality to supply potable water to Limoges. Seconded by Councilor Bouchard. Any questions? Are those in favor? Oh, I just wanted to make sure of one thing. I asked Mr. Levert only if anyone had any question. It's not my fault if you didn't raise your hand appropriately. Oh, I was slow on the switch tonight. I was slow on the uptake. I just wanted to make sure, Mr. Leonard, you know, furthering our discussion we had earlier on today concerning this. Now, the percentages that were established deal specifically with the breakdown, our breakdown of costs concerning construction and the maintenance of this particular infrastructure, more specifically south of the city. And that these figures represent quite well the percentage that we'll have to deal with in light of the water, the benefits that will be incurred by the city, by someone else other than the City of Clarence and Rockland. I'm sure that, I just want to make sure that you're, I just want to make sure that you're okay with those figures that we dealt with earlier on in our conversation. Go ahead. Well, in fact, I can give you a concrete example, for example. Mr. Mayor, if you take a look at the MOU and the cost distribution schedule, we're talking about the line with regards to the juxtaposition of Caron or the station that in Caron, a station that we operate and the line that goes on to Bouvier and the breakdown is 68% for another municipality, for La Nation, and another 32% for us. Now, at present, we're operating this and maintaining it. If it breaks without that understanding, we'll be paying 100% of the costs. Otherwise, the Nation Municipality will pay for the breakage now. So it's in our interest to enter into an agreement with the Nation Municipality. All infrastructures or infrastructures outside of City of Clarence and Rockland, well, we come out the winner if we enter into a partnership with another municipality with regards to maintenance and replacement. And from an equity standpoint, let's take a look at consumption. Consumption goes by the south of Rockland and they're the ones that are responsible for these costs. That's why you have a breakdown of 62% and it's not all that far, starting from Caron really, right up to the water tower, right to the very limit of the City of Clarence and Rockland. So that's 62%. That's a significant advantage. Councilor Chouigna, who's going to determine? Is the Nation Municipality going to be the municipality to determine the rate of consumption of their own citizens or are we just charging them back for the quantity of water that they use and then they can charge back the amount that they want to their respective citizenry or citizens? Mr. Mayor, the agreement is set up in this particular fashion. We charge them a bulk rate line item for their water consumption. They consume a certain amount of water, what they do with this particular water and how they sell that back to their citizens, well, that's their business. But let me tell you this though. They need to put in a lot of investment, a significant amount of investment, so that the amount that they sell back with regards to water consumption to the citizens is quite high. So we're not called upon to maintain their particular section, starting from the limit of La Nation or the Nation Township, the end of Hammond in this particular case, well, shall I say, Cheney. So from Cheney on, it's their responsibility if the main, if the water main breaks. Yes, it's their responsibility then because the breakage will be upon their property or on their property. If it breaks, if the main breaks on our property, then it's our responsibility. The closer you get to Rockland, the higher the cost for us because the water is produced and consumed for our own purpose. The farther we get away from Rockland, it's the more La Nation will pay. So don't forget, they didn't obtain any grants, they're facing considerably high costs here. Councilor Levert, I think that the project, if we take a look at this particular project as a whole, it's quite an appealing project. I'm in favor of this, but there are $2.5 million. They'll be giving us an amount of $2.5 million and that will be plowed back in our reserves. We've already started receiving emails from people, from people in Ward 7, especially in Ward 7, such as Mill Creek North and even further back in Canaan, where water is really, they don't have good drinking water. And even they've requested for some lots to be detached, but they weren't allowed to do so because the water is not proper drinking water. So people take a look at this situation and say to themselves, we can sell water elsewhere, but we can't even supply our own drinking water. Well, can't we just, I understand, Mr. Mayor, that those that live along Russell Road right up to Mill Creek don't face that quandary, but north of Mill Creek, you know, this is a paved area? Oh, I remember that paved area quite well. Well, you know, these people really are starting to, you shout about some situations where, you know, we're not supplied with proper drinking water, but they're supplying drinking water to another municipality. I know that in 20 years from now, this would all be paid up, given the amount they're paying us year in and year out, but we also have to think about budgetary pressures. Mr. Leonard, part number six, you're dealing with consultation. I find it interesting.
With our water, at least one of our operators, Aqua, regarding operational costs and impacts. And what did they say? I also want to know what their thoughts are. I understand you're going to consult with them, but I mean, they must have some comments on whether this is good or not.
Well, the purpose of the consultation that was had was to determine what was going to happen from an operational standpoint. Otherwise, we would not have proceeded any further in the steps we've taken. But we took a look at additional operational costs or operating expenditures that were involved in supplying drinking water to La Nation Township. Now, in truth, or the fixed costs, you know, with regards to employees involved, will be very little, very, there won't be any difference with regard to this. However, variable operational costs such as chemical ingredients involved or chemical products involved in making drinking water drinkable, if you wish, well, might not be taken into account. taken into account.
At any point in time, another council could come in eight years ago in Nation and say, I'm not paying this. So what is exactly, where does, where does that lead us? Because we can't say it won't happen, because it's a very good possibility, especially with the amount of...
It could be from our end as well.
Yeah, and could be from our end as well, but most likely them, because they're going to be paying a...
Mr. Leonard...
Yeah, but I just wanted to get my question answered.
Yeah, so, Mr. Mayor, in regards to that, there's actually going to be a formal agreement that's going to be formed after the MOU, if the MOU is approved and signed. And in that agreement, you would, you'd identify the term of this agreement, and there's also a committee that's going to be formed. So once the committee is formed, which is going to be comprised of staff on both municipalities plus members of council on both municipalities, once that's done, it kind of acts like Committee of the Hall, where recommendations will be done through that committee and then will be brought to respective councils. So you'd always have this continued buy-in from both councils. You could always, I guess you could always end up with...
I'm just worried about the price tag if one of them decides to get it, especially them, I'm not going to worry about us, but if they just say we're, we're out, how does that affect the tax...
It's not, it's not something that you could get out of, because once you've connected, you, I mean, you've bought into the system, like you can't, you can't decide to shut off the tab. And they've also agreed to purchase a minimum of 350 cubic meters per day, regardless of development, like that is something we're able to negotiate based on the feedback that we receive from council. So, I mean, if they don't develop one, one bit, and even if we don't develop one bit, we still end up with $164,000 annually of revenue based on this agreement. So worst case, we get $2.6 million right as soon as they connect, plus $164,000 annually just for connecting.
Okay, I just, you know, this stuff is going to come out, I mean, I don't, I don't say nothing's impossible.
Mr. Collier?
And as a comfort, you know, they've given a lot of consideration to their options for where to get water for their ratepayers. We're not talking about a water park or a splash pad, we're talking about actual water that people need to live. So, you know, if they wanted to change their mind and go with one of the other options, their, the cost is double, right? This is still the best, cost-efficient, most secure route for them to provide safe drinking water and adequate a volume of drinking water to their ratepayers.
Not only that, if you look, they'll probably borrow money for this capital project, and it's probably for 30 years anyway. You don't want that whole thing shut down, not doing nothing after you paid all this money.
I wonder why, you know, how they...
Yeah, I know.
That's a valid question.
But you know, I don't...
One of the things that, you know, when people read that report, you know, from our residents, they're going to see that we're charging them less than we are charging our own residents for water. So that's one thing we need to, to address.
Mr. Lavert?
And then the other thing as well, from the development community, they're going to see this as, or they could see this as, we're advancing our own schedule to benefit another municipality, therefore charging us more development charges down the road quicker than perhaps anticipated. So I just want to make sure that we address those two points.
Mr. Mayor, those are fair comments and questions, but, so, in terms of, in terms of the rate, the reason why it would seem like we may be charging a different rate is that in our rate structure, we have a fixed and variable rate, and the majority of the, of the capital investments that we make in our network are covered through the fixed rates, and some of them do find themselves on the variable rate though. And what happens is that, it really wouldn't be fair to the nation if we're replacing a water main, let's say, in Moore's Village, for them to pay the capital cost of that through the bulk rate that we're changing, that we're charging them, because there is no direct benefit to them from that capital investment. So the bulk rate that we're charging them is, is the operational cost to produce and to supply water to them, plus what we consider a revenue or a revenue for that service that we're providing them. So that's, that's why that rate is at 1.28, and it's subject for review annually based on the operation cost increases by our provider, based on the committee that is formed and whether or not they see fit to increase that, that rate. So we're not tied to this 1.28 eternally, it's just a starting point.
And the development community?
Yeah, and so the development community, really, what you end up getting is that, if anything, you're going to end up having a benefit to either our rates for our residents and the development community, because we're getting an injunction of $15 million into our network that we wouldn't otherwise get. And so you'd still have to, you still have to pay for these costs, right? Because these are all projects that we would need to support our own growth and our own development. So you'd have your development community through the DCs having to support the majority of these costs. Now we're getting a partner that's paying 60% of these costs, actually. So it's a benefit to our development community, it's a benefit to our residents, because the fee rates would go up higher if, if this partnership would occur.
Mr. Simard?
If the, if Nation wants to grow the inner water, they don't have anywhere else to go. They have to take, that's what's going to cost them, like you said, double the price. So this is pretty much an overbringer from what I can see.
And it's arrangements that are done, Ampera is getting water from Ottawa, Bank of Killers is getting water from Hawk Street. So it's something that's common, I guess.
I know that the mayor of the Nation, of the March, you know, they, they mentioned that if they didn't have the water, their development was almost out of the house. So they need the water, so they're going to pay the price, because they have to, and they have the source and the water, they have both services. So it's going to bloom very quickly, and it's close to the highway. So we need, we just need to do the same thing here, have the water and the source in Bourget to compete with the March. No, it's true, you need both services, you know, and you would see...
We're talking about water here, doing the...
No, but they're going to use the water, you're going to pay for the water, because they need to develop. And the mayor mentioned it three times, you know.
Okay, still?
Any other questions? Are those in favor? All right, then, carried. Partnership with Ontario 211 for emergency situation or information, or paths for emergency information? Yes. That the committee recommends to council to sign the attached agreement with the Community Information Centre of Ottawa slash 211 Eastern Region, CICO slash 211 Eastern Region, in order to formalize a relationship and information flow paths for emergency information to be shared with the public, seconded by Counselor Zant. Questions? Counselor Lallone? Well, I'm happy to see this become reality. When I attended the briefing session along with Mr. Wilson and Mrs. Collier, we talked about a potential partnership set up with Ontario 211, and I'm happy to see that it is now a reality. Are all those in favor? Carried? Let's go on now to the Protective Services Monthly Statistics. Counselor Bouchard? Move that information 2019-0018 be received for information purposes, seconded by Counselor Simard. Any questions? Are those in favor then? Carried. Any other items? Do you have any questions to ask of our department heads? Counselor Chouagnier? No. Counselor Grimaud? No. Counselor Zant? Just a question? Mr. Leonard?
Spring, are we ready with the, as far as the base is being unclogged and ready to kick in a lane? Because the last little melt we had last week, my phone didn't stop raining, so I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, we try to be as proactive as possible and address that, and there are some problem areas that we're aware of that we routinely inspect and open it up as much as we can. And so in regards to, to...
Obviously, the more the downtown core, there's some of the catch basins that are like pretty much covered up with ice.
Yeah, we removed the snowbanks and so we're in a better position to be able to open those up into a lot of water, some of the catch basins.
I think, second question, is, are the smaller streets going to have one last, I guess, removal of snowbanks? There's some that are like down to a mile deep.
Yep, so we have another snowbank rule that's planned. We're waiting a little bit to see if there's additional snow that's going to happen, to try to minimize the cost as much as possible, but we do have a...
I'm thinking of Notre Dame, like where there's one lane, so people are like going into parking lots, climbing up on top of the snowbank to be able to get around, so. Thanks, that's it.
No other questions? No? That's fine. Yes? I'm happy to see that the municipality starts to be well-lit. I believe that all the burnt-out lights are, have been replaced. There are still 200 lights to be replaced, on a grand total of 1,200 that needed to be replaced, there are about 200 still to be replaced. This is a $530,000 project that will be completed in four years, it's going to be all paid up, and the lights are guaranteed for about 10 years. Well, so, have you finished, both of you, you know, haggling back and forth on the amounts involved? So after about four years, we'll be saving about $119,000, money in our pockets. Counselor Simard? There's a situation prevailed also along Main and Baseline, but everything's okay now. Adjournment called at 9:24 then. Thank you. All right then. Thank you for making this meeting so pleasant.